Where are we looking at? Where's the live? Good afternoon and welcome to our first virtual meeting of the Borough Council. Most members have become familiar with our virtual meeting format, but as a brief reminder, and for the benefit of any public who may be watching this livestream, I would just like to highlight a few points. Firstly, please keep your microphone muted when not speaking to avoid any background noise and ensure that any other mobile devices are on silent or switched off. Secondly, please use the meeting chat to indicate you wish to speak and I will invite you in at the appropriate time. And lastly, should my connection as chair be lost during the meeting, the deputy mayor will take over and a shorter adjournment may be called until the connection is resumed. We start before we move on to the formal business. Items on the agenda is this great sadness that I have to announce the sad deaths of our colleagues, councillor Mrs Cooney and also Warren Low. Councillor Mrs Cooney was a Conservative councillor for the Longback Ward in Mask. She was elected as a councillor in May 1999 and had served on the council almost 21 years. She was 89 years old. Warren Low worked as a highways operative in the Grinchtown depot and commenced employment with the council in April 2016. He was 24 years old. Our thoughts are with the families and friends. Please, all members, join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect. Right, thank you everybody. There will now be an opportunity for any tributes to be paid. Whilst doing so, we will be reminded in order with a picture of image displayed on the screen. Steve Care, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. During the lockdown, I've done a lot of walking to fill in what spare time I've had in the moors and woods around Moorsham. And I say this because on the day Nora's death, or shortly afterwards, I was sat down for a drink and a snack right out on the moors, all by myself. And being a bit of a sad councillor, I thought, I'll have a look at my emails. And sure enough, I did look and I was shocked to see that Nora Cooney had died. And because of where I was on that occasion, I think I'll never forget that particular moment. I didn't know she was ill, but I didn't realise she was so ill. Now, probably the main reason I'm speaking about Nora, apart from the fact that she was such an excellent councillor, is that both she and I started together on Langbar Council, which was the predecessor of Redcar in Cleveland, both together in 1979. And what a number of changes we witnessed together from then till 2020. Of course, we've got a new brother, a new name. We've moved from being a district authority to a unitary authority. We've got new council officers. We've changed from the committee system to the cabinet system. We've embraced, or some of us have embraced, technology. Sometimes I think I've only slightly embraced it. And also, the way we behave, I think, has changed as well. I think today we are more democratic and thoughtful and respectful towards others. And we have a more measured way of doing business. But I must admit, I do miss the argy-bargy and humour, sort of barrack room humour that used to pervade our meetings. Throughout all this, Nora moved ahead, never falling out with anybody. In one sense, she was above party. She moved ahead with what she had to do, doing her best for Redcar in Cleveland and doing her best for her constituents, which is why, of course, she was re-elected so many times. I think she's left a wonderful legacy. Because perhaps the main thing she did when she was on the council was to represent and champion children. In fact, she was the children's champion for many years. And what better legacy could you have, apart from, of course, being mayor of the borough, than doing so much for children so that these children can move into the future, taking something of Nora with them. She was an excellent councillor and I've enjoyed serving with her.
We'll go on to councillor Ovens and come back to councillor King. Councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I didn't meet Nora until 1999 elections. And subsequently, we served on various children's and adult services committees. And of course, she had a long time association with Cleveland's Fire Authority, which I was able to join her and travel together with her. I got to know her not only as a colleague, but as a friend. She was dedicated to her family, who she talked about frequently, and I spoke about mine. She was an excellent councillor, representing Redcar in Cleveland. And of course, she was dedicated to the community of New Mask. I'd like to thank her for all her hard work over the years. And just to say that Nora will be sadly missed by everyone who knew her. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. Is councillor King available?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to express my condolences to Nora's family and pay tribute to Nora. Everyone you spoke to only ever had good words to say about Nora, myself included. I first became aware of her as a young child, curious as to why the lady whose house I would stand outside of to get the bus to school often had posters in a window. I asked my parents who she was and they said she was a local councillor and a very good one at that. Over the last five years, I began to know Nora better. She was happy to share advice and help at any time. And despite being from different political parties, she took me under her wing and was extremely supportive, especially when it came to her passion for improving children's lives and in particular, the children in our care. Nora always took her responsibility seriously. She rarely missed a meeting and only then with good cause. But not just the council meeting, she also attended the foster care as thank you events, the foster children's award ceremonies and Christmas parties, which I know was appreciated by many. And she'd be missed by everyone who went, including the social workers who speak so highly of her. There was little in the Mask and New Mask area which Nora had not been involved with over the years. The Mask Sports Recreation Partnership was one, and she chaired some difficult meetings there where I was told she could be quite firm if you piped up and your name wasn't on the list. And she'd happily stand her ground whilst telling any rowdy participants to leave immediately. Nora also regularly attended the Mask Community Partnership, providing updates to the members and taking questions, even though many were from outside her ward. And her generosity at donating towards any projects was amazing. You needed it. She'd hunt through a box of crafts, go in the loft or the garage, and be sure to find just what you needed. One of the things I most admired about Nora was her independent nature. Nothing seemed to ever slow her down when it came to getting things done. And her loyalty to the local community was second to none on both the Borough and Parish Council and as the mayor. She was an inspirational lady who taught me so much. I know everyone in the Liberal Democrat group and all of the councillors who had the great privilege of knowing her will miss her. And we send our thoughts and best wishes to Gerard and all of her family. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Lanigan, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. How do you follow that tribute that Karen has just done now? Councillor Cooney was a lady, never heard her say a bad word about anyone, always helpful when I first got on the council and was on the Fire Authority, always there to help. And I'm sure there'll be other tributes of Mr Mayor coming through for Nora Cooney. And of course, I send my full condolences to family. I would also like to mention Warren Low. He's a young man who worked for us down at Grinchtown and sadly lost his life. Spoke to this young man on several occasions and I send absolute condolences to his family, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Carl Quarterman, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is very sad news regarding the passing of Nora. She was a councillor who spent many years serving the residents in this borough. Nora was a lovely, charming lady, who I had the pleasure of spending numerous hours with through our roles in relation to apprenticeships and youth employment initiatives, such as the Redcar Fire Station, which champions the schemes of supporting young adults. She was always good fun to be with and gracious and supportive as well, especially when I was a new councillor. She would be missed by all of us. And on behalf of the Labour Group, our condolences to her family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Quarterman. Councillor Stuart Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, in allowing me to say a few words in memory of councillor Nora Cooney on behalf of the Independent Group. I've known Nora for well over 20 years. Nora was a hardworking and conscientious councillor for this borough. She was always a diligent and passionate ward councillor for the Longback Ward for whom she served and supported many local causes and community groups over these years. She was also a fellow parish councillor myself, serving on the Saltburn Mask and New Mask Parish Council, for which she was chair of the parish between 2014 and 2016. Nora will be sadly missed by this council and the wider community. And on a personal level, I will greatly miss her friendship and gardens she has given me over the years as a borough councillor. Our thoughts at this time, of course, with her husband Gerard and immediate family. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Philip Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would firstly like to echo councillor Lanigan's thoughts on Warren Low. To leave this life at such a young age is so tragic. So our thoughts must be with him and his family. We have before us a picture of a smiling lady, councillor Nora Cooney, who was in her 90th year. And no one, certainly in our group, could conceive of a day when she would not be with us. So it was a shock indeed when we learnt of her passing. Nonetheless, we have many, many fond memories of her. We remember her helping others. We remember the happiness that she brought. And that smile sometimes came at unexpected at times. We remember her sense of duty. And indeed, all her colleagues will remember her devotion. And I'm sure that will be echoed by all the officers throughout the years who served not under her, but with her. So it is a sad time. Very sad for her family, for her husband Gerard. But we take many memories with us as we continue the work that we do as servants of the people and for which councillor Cooney was a beacon which we will follow. We are pleased to have known her during her life.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. I thank you all for sharing the tributes with us. And I'm sure we all appreciate what Nora has done for the community and she will be remembered. We'll move on to business. And to deal quickly with a technical issue before the business is started, you will be aware that under the terms of the constitution, there is normally a requirement for members to stand when speaking and that voting is usually by show of hands. Obviously, these rules are impractical in a remote meeting. So can I propose that council procedures, Rule 21, put stroke one, and 17 stroke three are disappplied for this meeting, so that standing is not required and voting will take place by the way of a roll call if necessary? Can I have somebody second that before, please?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor. Councillor Davies.
Thank you. Right, we'll continue with the meeting then. Item one, apologies for absence. I have councillor Holmes. Is there any other?
Councillor Fisher.
Councillor Fletcher.
Any more? All right, thank you. Decisions of interest. As this is a virtual meeting, there is no form being circulated. Democratic service holder registers all interests declared by members. If you have an interest that is pertinent to a particular item of business on the agenda, I would ask that you declare it at the start of the relevant agenda item. Could I have the accuracy of the meetings held on the 27th of February confirmed, please?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Could I have a second, please?
Yes, I'll second. Sandra Smith.
Thank you. Item four, to receive any announcements. I would like to thank, this is my announcement, I would like to thank all our staff for their hard work and commitment in keeping the council running in these difficult times. Firstly, with a cyber attack followed by the Covid-19, with special thanks to our frontline workers, a big thank you to you all. Have we any other announcements from the leader?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you very much indeed. Members, it's certainly been a tumultuous time since we met in February of this year. It seems longer ago than that. We have suffered a devastating cyber attack, which took down our computer systems and created a huge challenge for us to maintain our key services to the public. As we were in initial stage of recovery from the cyber attack, the serious Covid-19 became apparent. And we have been living and working with its effects and aspects since then. However, important progress has been made. And I would like to pay tribute to all our fantastic staff who have gone the extra mile to ensure our residents receive the service they need. My particular thanks goes to the officers who have been working on the frontline in the past few months. I have to tell you, members, during the cyber attack, we had staff on 24/7, working through this to mitigate what we found ourselves with. As for the Covid-19, the number one priority was, of course, to preserve life and all we can to stop the spread of this awful virus. We also needed to respond with flexibility to continue to deliver key services and establish a way to recover as lockdown eases. Our staff made sure our public services continued and have adapted brilliantly to the challenges of Covid. We also ensured that the most vulnerable in society could access help when they needed it. Volunteers in our community hub moved from their usual role as in the council to deal with thousands of calls and emails and deliver nearly 4,000 food parcels. I would like to thank at this moment, Mr Mayor, the members who actually came in to help us with packing of those boxes. It was very much appreciated. Our focus is now, of course, doing all we can to help ensure this virus remains under control as lockdown starts to ease. We have worked with our towns on guidance about social distancing. And our offices are working closely with schools as they reopen for more children. Small and medium businesses vital for our economy have been supported with grants. As I mentioned, we have had an extra complication dealing with what was a devastating cyber attack at the time of the lockdown. And of course, a huge thank to the IT staff who have helped us recover as quickly as possible. However, that work is still continuing. So also some further news, Mr Mayor. Thanks to the huge efforts that we've got. We've got positive news coming out of South East Development Corporation industrial site, following the settlement of the land ownership issues that we had. Just last week, more details were announced about plans for an internationally important carbon capture industrial development at the site involving some of the world's biggest energy firms. It's a project which would put our area at the cutting edge of the environmental friendly technology and has the potential to create thousands of jobs. I have been this morning, Mr Mayor, on site for several hours as the ground is starting to be cleared. I was talking to a young man down there this morning and he actually worked for SSI and had been laid off all this time. However, he's on site, he's working and he's clearing the site and he's telling me what a huge move forward this will be for our area, the Tees Valley and Wadra Fields. We have produced a master plan for the redevelopment of Loftus and work is underway in a bid for the multi-billion pound deal for Redcar. As we continue to come out of lockdown, we will hopefully see a safe borough with a prosperous economy. And this council will do everything, Mr Mayor, to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Carl Quarterman has indicated he has a point of order. I'm not going to interrupt the speakers when a point of order comes in. I will hear it at the end of the speech. Councillor Carl Quarterman.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. We've learned that the Independent Group have changed their leader, but we've had no formal announcement to counsel. We understand that you're the new leader, Mr Mayor. Is that announcement going to be made today? And I'd ask, is it constitutional to have the mayor also the group leader for the independents? I would have thought that the mayor needs to be entirely independent. Thank you.
We did seek guidance on this. And yes, I am the new leader. We sought the guidance from legal on it. And there's nothing constitutional to stop me being the leader of the group. As you know, we're in unprecedented times. Normally, at the end of May, I would have taken over. Unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, I'm staying on for three months and then it will be changed and it won't make any difference. Thank you. We now go on to announcements from cabinet members. And we start with councillor King, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The last few months have been immensely difficult for so many of our residents. And I'd like to express our commiserations and sincere condolences to everyone who has been affected by the impacts of coronavirus, and especially those from 133 families who have lost loved ones in our borough. I'd like to thank everyone involved in helping to mitigate the impact of the virus, including key workers and the staff at the council, who have quickly adapted and risen to new challenges to protect our residents and deliver key services. I must also thank the many volunteer groups, both established and newly formed, who have been working tirelessly to support local residents with shopping, food parcels and welfare checks. They really have been amazing. Although restrictions are being eased, we must remain vigilant as we have a responsibility to combat the spread of this dreadful virus and its many devastating consequences. The latest data shows that over 60% of the 699 positive test results in the borough are female. 35% of positive results are for those aged over 65. And although test results are skewed where care homes are located, every ward in Redcar and Cleveland has had positive cases recorded. Since test and trace went live, 78% of those receiving a positive result in Redcar in Cleveland have participated fully in the test and trace initiative, allowing a further 317 contacts to be traced and asked to isolate. The mobile testing site was at Kirkleaton Moor Garden yesterday and is there again today. And it's hoped that it will be there again each Wednesday and Thursday in July. And hopefully, regular days will be confirmed going forward to make it easier for booking appointments. There has, however, been surplus capacity when the testing station's been in Redcar. And it's everyone's responsibility to book themselves in for a test if they show symptoms. There will also be additional testing capability available to deal with any local outbreaks. Colour three antibody testing is now being provided by South East Hospitals NHS Foundation Trust and is available for key NHS and care staff. They've undertaken over 6,000 tests to date. You might have seen articles in the national media which named Redcar in Cleveland as one of the 36 local authority areas which could follow Leicester by imposing a local lockdown. The articles were based on a comparison of the number of confirmed Covid cases week on week. The media publicised the areas which recorded an increase and surmised that because of this, they would be heading for further lockdown. According to the figures used by the media, Redcar in Cleveland did record an increase over the two weeks in question. That increase was from zero to one case. Clearing out the level of cases means local lockdown is unnecessary. And work continues to maintain the current situation where the infection rate in our borough appears to be under control compared to some other areas of the country, with recent data showing a drop from 72 confirmed cases in the previous 30 days to just 10 in the previous 14 days. Our local outbreak management plan was published on the 26th of June. As with everything to do with Covid, there'll be a learning curve and the plan and our response to a local outbreak will evolve as more learning takes place. The South East Health Protection Board has met a number of times. They've been undertaking desktop exercises to understand the implications of local outbreaks. And the government has enabled the board to access more localised information to help locate any local breakdowns. The first meeting of the Strategic Coordinating Group took place yesterday, including our key partners, NHS and Blue Light. And the Local Outbreak Control Group will be meeting tomorrow. We've recently been informed that regular testing will now be rolled out for care home staff and residents. Staff will be tested weekly and residents every 28 days. As the impact of coronavirus covers all areas of council responsibilities, regular updates will be provided at scrutiny committees and full council. Please stay safe and follow current guidelines. And let's work together to help our residents to stay safe. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say for the adult services, a huge thank you to all the staff.
to all the staff and officers involved with adult services who have continued to do their jobs, whether they've been working from home, from in office from time to time or actually getting out and about, still coping and dealing and seeing our vulnerable residents in particular. They've done this with enthusiasm and dedication and have taken care of and safeguarded our residents in very challenging times. I also can't forget all the carers, whether they're family carers, our homes, our care homes, nursing homes or domiciliary care. They've all had a big part to play and not forgetting our partners, so too the NHS. Everybody is pulled together. Volunteers have made sure that people had things delivered. They've attended to their needs, whatever they were. They've listened to people and working all together. We have kept our residents safe and well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Evans. Councillor Davies, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to formally advise that obviously Sarah Robson left in, in May. Sarah was the corporate director for Growth Enterprise and Environment. And I'd just like to place on, on record my thanks for her hard work and dedication to Redcar in Cleveland. She was visionary, positive and an absolute pleasure to work with. And I wish her well for the future, in her future endeavours. And at the same time, obviously welcome to Andrew Carter. I think this is the first full council meeting since Andrew Carter arrived. Andrew's obviously started in May as well and he comes from Hartlepool, joins us from Hartlepool. On behalf of the council, I'd just like to wish him the very best of luck in his employment with us and hopefully everyone will get to meet him in person sometime soon. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Have we any announcements from the managing director, Mr Johnson, please?
No announcements, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. There's no questions received from public notices, so we move on to cabinet reports and we start with Children in Our Care, councillor Barnes, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report offers a general update on activity within the children in our care service and how we have responded to the Covid-19 pandemic and corresponding lockdown. Of course, our immediate concern was our ability to maintain a safe and stable service for the children and young people who are currently in our care and our care leavers. Fortunately, the impact of the virus has been minimal in respect of staff health and wellbeing. Approximately 10% of the team have had to self-isolate at some point, but the majority have been able to carry out their full duties as normal, working from home wherever possible. Statutory visits to all children in our care were a priority and the team have been able to maintain all direct contact with children in line with legislative timescales. The table in Appendix A shows that the total number of children in our care at the point of lockdown was 351 with 345 at the end of May. There were 13 children new to our care during this period, which is a lower than average rate per week. 12 children returned home during the same period, so an increase of one. However, we also have a number of 18-year-olds who have recently left our care, giving a revised total of 345. And although we continue to have a higher rate per 10,000 population than the national rate, Covid hasn't impacted significantly on the numbers. Our foster carers have been able to use technology for homeschooling, mutual support and promoting the ongoing relationship between the children and their birth families. Similarly, supervising social workers have used virtual means to support all carers visiting face-to-face only in exceptional circumstances. The frequency of support and supervision has not reduced and the feedback from foster carers is extremely positive. The recruitment of new foster carers has continued throughout this period and the service welcomed 15 fostering families to the virtual skills to foster trading in March and all but one of the attendees chose to proceed with an assessment afterwards, which is a higher than normal conversion rate. Between May and the end of June, seven new foster carers have been approved by the fostering panel meeting virtually, as is shown in Table two. In addition, the data in Appendix A shows that our use of independent foster agencies has reduced considerably. This not only saves us money but also achieves improved outcomes for children in our care. The Leaving Care Team currently supports 112 care leavers aged between 18 and 25 years old. Inevitably, Covid-19 has impacted on the emotional wellbeing of some of our young care leavers, but they are all contacted at least fortnightly with daily contacts for those who are most vulnerable. And some care leavers were provided with a mobile phone if they did not already have one. Local mental health charity, The Link, collected and delivered food hampers to any care leavers in self-isolation and to those young people who were struggling financially. This was another means of contact and check-in with those who needed it most. Table three in paragraph 4.6 shows an increase in the number of care leavers who are not currently in education, employment or training between March and May of this year. This is a direct result of the pandemic as some businesses have ceased trading and the young people have lost employment. With government support, the majority of care leavers have been provided with a computer to help them with job searches, training opportunities, CV writing and other employment-related skills and activity. Over 95% of our care leavers are in suitable accommodation with only four choosing not to engage with the service. However, fortunately, we know who these young people are, so are assured that they are safe. To further support and develop the Have Your Say Children in Care Council, a decision has been made to work jointly with the youth services around this agenda. Due to Covid, the group has not been able to meet for some time, however, they have kept in touch virtually. Following the Covid lockdown, the virtual school worked swiftly with schools and social workers to construct a risk-rated list of all children in our care to establish whether they were expected in school or not. Virtual school staff have continued to gather and collate data from the beginning of lockdown to the present day. Reviews and meetings have taken place remotely and children have continued to come into care, move placement and schools during lockdown. The virtual school has worked with its data processor Welfare Call to facilitate a comprehensive analytics package so that a live data dashboard is available which can be interrogated. The graphs in 6.7 show a comparison of fixed term exclusions by autumn and spring terms. And although the data is only calculated up to the 6th of March, it is a positive indication that the exclusion rate was on a slightly downward trend, i.e. 18 compared to 27. We anticipate that many young people may struggle with their return to school and additional support will be required. The virtual school has provided all designated teachers in our schools the opportunity for an online learning module around post-pandemic nurture. The recent IT issues and subsequent pandemic have meant that social workers had a backlog of PEPs. So a new Covid-19 virtual PEP was introduced to help them. Over the summer break, we will quality ensure any new PEPs completed before the end of July to ensure full recovery by September. The table in 7.1 suggests a reduction in the number of unaccompanied asylum-seeking young people. However, the numbers given only relate to those under 18. After they reach 18, they move into our Leaving Care Service where we currently have 21 young people, an increase of five since December 2019. We now have two permanent UASC social workers in post, which will give us the opportunity to develop the service further. We know that many of these young people struggle to settle in foster care and quickly want to move into independent living. Nationally, there are very few foster carers with the specialist skills to understand the level of past trauma that many of these children have experienced. The team are planning to encourage specialised foster carer recruitment to meet this gap in our current provision. As can be seen from Table five in paragraph 8.2, we continue to see a rise in the number of children known to be vulnerable, exploited, missing or trafficked due to child criminal exploitation. The service has continued to hold our Vulnerable Persons Group meeting, which has enabled a monthly review of all children and young people known to vent. We need to be aware of the impact of lockdown on our children and young people and whether this has left them potentially more open to exploitation. It has been decided to hold a weekly meeting to review all new referrals and missing episodes and this will mean that we are better placed to recognise and respond to the signs of exploitation. The service has been successful in securing a bid to work with research and practice and the Children's Society for support to develop our mapping data. This three P model focuses on peers, places and perpetrators and is already showing us hotspot areas. A further development is the introduction of a CCE toolkit for practitioners. This provides access to a host of written, web-based and video materials, including resources for practical practitioner learning and ongoing professional development. Finally, I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank all our officers, staff, social workers and everyone associated with the Children and Families Directorate of Redcar in Cleveland for their hard work and dedication to the wellbeing of all of our children in these difficult times. I recommend that the council notes and accepts the contents of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Could I have a second please?
One second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Corley, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Alison, for your report. I would just like to raise something that I feel has been missed and that's within the list of the looked after children, how many of them children were actually shielded? The reason I ask as well, so you raised the fact that The Link were helping the care leavers and the vulnerable with packages. I myself have been shielding with my son, who as a child shielder, a child shielder cannot do the same as an adult shielder. So an adult who shields can take themselves away from the family. A child can't do that unless you're willing to more or less not comfort your nine-year-old like we've had to. So we received his letter on the 16th of April and with that, there has been no follow-up from the government other than one email from Iceland that gave us regular slots if needed. So I just want to know how many children out there have been missed? Because it just seems that the elderly and the vulnerable that way have received the care packages. I haven't yet known and I know a few children that have shielded that haven't received them care packages. If it wasn't for some of the community, I'm very lucky that my sister has been doing my shopping for me eight weeks into that, then my dad, who should have been shielded, also did that. So I would just like to know what we are going to do to help those children that have been missed? And it's not just missed by the local authority, it's missed on a national level. There's shielded children there that have had no care packages, no support at all other than the occasional call from his GP or consultants. That's the only input we've had. So I would just like to put that down on the fact it's very good that there is charities helping our looked after children, but we have, we are corporate parents at the end of the day, so we also have to look after the children within our borough. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corley. I don't know, I haven't actually got information as to how many of our looked after children were shielding. But obviously, children who are looked after have obviously access to foster carers who have got allocated social workers so that any problems which may have-
Councillor Barnes? It's not a question-answer session. Can we just wait till the end till you sum up, please?
Sorry, sorry, I forgot.
All right, thanks. Councillor Hanaworth.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your report, councillor Barnes. I'd very much like to welcome the praise that you gave to our staff and foster carers during this very difficult time. And I can easily imagine them showing the strengths and the inventiveness that you describe in your report. The only slight criticism that I'd make of the report is to suggest that you don't normalise the incredibly high number of children in our care that we have at the moment. The tone of the report reads to me as if the department is reasonably comfortable with the present figure. And I think it's important to bear in mind how that might be read beyond the council. Because the stark fact is that if we get another nine children in our care on top of the 351, that will mean that one in 75 of all children in the borough is in the care of the authority. And that's a very shocking number. And of course, the really scary thing is that it's the right number. I'm sure that all of these children and young people need to be in care. And surely it's obvious that any community that has that level of need in its families is in deep trouble. Secondly, although the report says that Covid hasn't had a great effect on the numbers of children in our care, surely it's too early to say that yet. Because if levels of domestic abuse and mental health have gone up during the crisis, which seems likely, then we'll see the effects of that in the numbers over the coming year. And finally, could I ask if there are any children or young people still waiting for a final decision on their long-term fostering placement because of the April fostering panel being cancelled, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanaworth. Councillor Air, please. Councillor Air.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're coming through, yeah, you're coming through loud and clear. Go ahead.
Right, thank you. With, with schoolchildren reportedly going back to school in September, what provisions for PPE will be provided for them? Whilst there is a risk, the employer, which would be the schools, it's incumbent by law there that where there is a risk, that PPE should be provided. Is that the case, councillor, please? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Air. Councillor Barnes, would you like to sum up, please?
Yes, thank you. Well, as I was saying about the looked after children, I don't know how many children are in that category, but as I say, if they are looked after children- know how many children are in that category, but as I say, if they are looked after children, then they obviously via their foster parents and directly will have access to social workers who, I have no doubt, will have taken great care of them during the total lockdown. I can endeavour to find that information for you, however, as I say, I don't have the information offhand. Councilor Hanaway, I don't really feel that we are normalising the situation, and we certainly don't feel comfortable with what's happening. The tone of the report was just trying to sort of indicate that there hasn't been a huge increase during lockdown. We have done some work on the potential for what may happen after the, in the future, and particularly when children go back to school, and we actually, we did some modelling, and we anticipate that there's going to be a potential twenty percent increase in demand once the schools go back. Obviously, as I said, this was done through, doing some surveys with the liaison officers with schools who have been there right the way through during the lockdown, and, you know, it's something that we are aware of. In terms of, you mentioned domestic violence, we have seen an increase in reports, but we haven't seen an increase from the adult services or from the police, which doesn't seem to quite tie in together. I do have the information somewhere, but I'm trying to, I've got two screens up and I can't find it at the moment. If I find it, I'll send it to you via the chat. You ask whether any children or young people were waiting for a decision because the fostering panel was cancelled in April. Yes, it was, but in the meantime, we have had an additional panel and in June, and we're also having another additional panel in July. I've just had one this week, and then there's another one on the twentieth, and as I say, there was an extra one in June as well. So, as far as I'm aware, the answer to that, no, there aren't anybody, any children waiting for that. Councilor Air, if you mean, the council are providing PPE for school teachers if they require it. We have access to a sort of a central bank of PPE. We are charging schools for that, I have to say, if they require it. There is no provision for PPE for children, as it's not included within the guidance, and I would suggest that if parents wanted their children to have PPE, then, you know, masks or what have you, then they would provide them themselves. We are certainly not providing any PPE for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barnes.
Just a point of order there, Mr Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's incumbent on the schools to provide, and that's by legislation, to provide PPE where there is a known risk factor. Not only the parents have provided it, but the schools being, and don't forget there, the children are being, the parents are being forced to send their children to school in September.
Can I just interrupt you there, Councilor, that that's not the point of order?
Well, it's a point of order in this sense, that the parents have been forced to send their children to school. It's incumbent by legislation that the school should provide PPE free of charge. In any other business and industry, that would be provided where there is a known risk, no matter how slight it may be.
Councilor, I'm sure Councilor Barnes will check that out and get back to you.
Can I just say that if Councilor Air is sort of suggesting that the school has to provide PPE for all the children, I think you'll find that the guidance does not say that in the slightest, plus the fact that children are not employees of the school, and so therefore, there would not be that requirement as employers. Obviously, the school employ the teachers and other staff there, and they will provide PPE for their employees should they request it.
I'm not gone, Mr Mayor. It's just that the children are being forced back to school by the government, and therefore, the government should provide PPE free of charge. I'll just leave it at that, and I'll follow it up there if the council has more words to say about it outside of this meeting.
Right. I'm sure we can greet the recommendations. Does anybody object? Okay, that's carried then. We now move on to item eight, to receive reports from portfolio holders, so it's Councilor Glynn Nightingale, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd like to start by commending the report to the council, and I hope the councillors have found this useful. I'd like to preface my report with two key general points, if I may, that I hope members will actually accept. Firstly, we live in an uncertain world, and I think it's pretty certain that at present, that Harold Wilson's idea that a week in politics is a long term time currently needs updating in the present circumstances. A day in politics is now a long time, and we are in the thick of it. And this will, this is and will continue to affect everything the council is doing in these unique circumstances, especially dealing with council revenues and expenditure, maintaining realistic services, responding to government measures, and overwhelmingly the national and economic, local economic situation. If I had a crystal ball, I would be able to report with far greater certainty, but like most people, I don't. The hallmark of what we do over the short, medium and long term is that any decision-maker must be honest with the public. Consequently, in response to this unique situation in delivering services, the council must balance risk with being careful and prudent. So, it's essential that we avoid long-term commitments that we may later regret. If we say now exactly what we will do, it will be premature and very likely be subject to expensive change. This is especially the case as the government intermittently trittles down its latest decisions that can affect what we decide to do, and these decisions directly affect local authorities like ourselves. So, inevitably, the council will assess the financial implications of what we do and make sure that what we do is in the best interests of the residents of the borough. In these unique challenges we face, judgement is essential, but it's difficult. This applies to what we say and what we do. In this context, members need to take account of the following. A report will be produced for the August cabinet meeting when we'll have a quick clearer picture of what, picture of events and what the government decides to do. It will be based on the situation as we see it at the time. This will be available for members at the appropriate scrutiny meeting before the cabinet meeting. This will allow us to respond to yesterday's emergency government measures, whatever the government announced before the start of the parliamentary recess on the twenty-second of July, and the situation emerging in early August. The second general point that I would like to make is this. I want to reassure members of the council's staff and the general public that the council is and has been on top of things. The council has done and will continue to do what is necessary to deal with the challenges we face. But turn now directly to the report. It falls into two parts. First, dealing with the unprecedented dual virus situations, and secondly, how the Resources Directorate has maintained business as usual over the past twelve months. So, first then, dealing with the cyber attack on the council's IT system and the coronavirus. There has been a major collaborative exercise across the council in response to these two unprecedented challenges, and I really must compliment and praise in particular councillors of all parties working together to help our community, especially those in need, and for members' patience in having to postpone meetings. Secondly, staff working under exceptionally inevitably difficult circumstances, and volunteers offering their commitment, time and energy in helping those in need, especially vulnerable people. The result is that the council has made an effective response both to the cyber attack and to the Covid nineteen pandemic. There are five aspects I'd like to highlight. Firstly, setting up the community helpline, the shielding hub for those in need of help, and providing PPE equipment to local care homes. Secondly, rolling out arrangements for staff to work from home by making sure staff are safe and still able to maintain services to the public. Thirdly, establishing the Borough Emergency Centre and collaborating with Tees Valley and regional authorities, and establishing links with central government. Fourthly, starting the development of the response and recovery strategy that was presented to the cabinet in June. Fifthly, restoring the council's IT system, including training staff, and ensuring payments could be made. Clearly, the financial implications of the dual challenges the council has faced are rightly the concern of members. That is why information has been released regularly to members, together with consultations using teams with group leaders, and information from those meetings should have been filtered down to members. And this includes three things. The capital budget proposals, including a press release last week that members will have seen. Secondly, a comprehensive update of how the government's help has been used by the council. That was circulated yesterday. This updates my report to the June cabinet meeting. In this context, the cabinet, the council has been collaborating with North East authorities, the Local Government Association, and in negotiations with the central government. Thirdly, the resources committee scrutinised the position as it was in June, and will have the opportunity to do so before the August cabinet meeting. I would like to turn now to the response to the cyber attack on the council's IT system. The report outlines the excellent work of the IT staff in getting the council's IT systems restored and back in action. This was an extraordinary situation. It's a compliment to our IT staff that ninety-five percent of the infected data has been rebuilt and is back up and running. Turning next to the response to the Covid nineteen outbreak, members will have seen the comprehensive information circulated yesterday, giving the up-to-date picture of the ten areas of government funding allocations and how they've been used. The funds include help to businesses like the discretionary grant and the hardship fund, infection control, reopening of high streets, emergency active travel plan fund, and the test and trace grant. Next, it's important that members recognise that the resources directors have played a significant role in coordinating the council's recovery planning, and this has been a major collaborative exercise across the council that is centred on the Borough Emergency Centre. The crucial issue now is to review the corporate plan to reflect step changes that may be needed in how we provide services to the public, how we expand digital services, and how we enhance the prospect of a green recovery. Next, I'd like to turn to the resource director's business as usual activities. This report provides information on a wide range of activities involving the director. First of all, the new administration's priorities and preparations for the new corporate plan, the start of building, driving change programme, mainly the saving activities of the council, that is, the first stages of the new asset strategy, organisational changes, including the introduction of the managing director model, the appointment of a new children's service director, and several new assistant directors. The timely appointment of the joint director of Public Health should also be noted. Secondly, the successes of the council's apprenticeship system to help young people and their employment aspirations. Exceeding the apprenticeship target is a major success. This, along with the council's continuing collaboration with the Redcar in Cleveland College, should be noted. Thirdly, in the governance section of the directorate, the report notes the achievements of the legal services section, the response to the deferred police commissioner and mayor elections, and the new methods needed to compile the electoral register in the emerging new normal. Fourthly, the range of issues associated with council finances include paperless direct debit changes and online account management for revenues and benefits. The successful old member budget conference in November helped to tackle debt, such as the money talk money event last November. And finally, improvements in the IT provision across the council. Mr Mayor, I commend the report to the council. There is one further point I'd like to make as well, Mr Mayor. I received a written question from Councilor Watts, and if she wishes me to answer it, I'm quite prepared to do so.
Thank you, Councilor Nightingale, for that comprehensive report. I have four speakers at the minute, so just in case you think you'll be missed out, there's Council Massey, Council Jeffrey, Council Carl Quarterman, and Councilor Watts. Council Massey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to Glynn Nightingale, Councilor Nightingale, for his report and for the promise of a further report in August. They're both welcome. In the report that we've got in front of us, it's been very specific on the pots of money that we've received from funding from central government, and equally, we got the email yesterday from Chris Stiles, which detailed how some of this money's been spent, but it's silent on the actual costs of Covid nineteen to this authority. So, while the eight point six million pounds grant from central government might seem generous on the face of it, it's useless unless we know how much we've actually spent, and I find it hard to believe that our finance department doesn't know that figure yet. Although we know this is a moving fee, so things will change over time, we surely must know what our outgoings have been over the course of this crisis, and while we thank our fantastic staff and our community for the work that they've done, this council, particularly the resources department and the resources scrutiny I chair, really need to know how much this is costing the council and how much money we've received from government in relation to that figure, and that's my question. Thank you.
Apologies. Councilor Nightingale, respond first, please.
Obviously, the costs are in three things. First of all, the additional spend that we've had to make, reduced income and foregoing savings plans, and there's a high degree of uncertainty in the impact of the Covid nineteen on our way of life and on the economy. It makes it incredibly difficult to forecast the financial impact, and at this stage, I think extrapolating from the small current experience of the disruption means that it could be highly speculative, and to assess the extent and duration is difficult in some areas. We are keeping this under review, and we're refining our assumptions in tracking key measures and taking account of further- in tracking key measures and taking account of further government announcements in terms of the recovery roadmap. I just want to stress as well that we are working in collaboration with other authorities to press more government funding. And there will obviously be a budget update that I mentioned earlier on in August. I think, I want to reiterate the basic position of what is happening means as far as we're concerned. That in assessing the financial impact, it's dependent on two things. It's dependent upon the the direct impact on the council finances at this stage, which is a completely uncertain factor in decision-making. And secondly, we need to know what the government is actually going to provide in terms of support. So really, it is unwise to speculate. And as you clearly admit, it's a moving feast. And we don't really want to make final decisions until we've got detailed information.
Thank you councillor Nightingale, councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Nightingale for your report. I'd like to raise my comments on paragraph 3.7, please. And I've got a comment to make and then three questions, if that's okay. Firstly, I'd just like to make a comment in relation to the corporate director of growth and enterprise and environment. I have to say that I find it really strange that there's no mention of the fact that Sarah has left us, nor any mention of our thanks for her work. Councillor Davies has said it, but I would certainly like to put on record my gratitude for all that she did in the short time she was here. And I'm certain that other councillors would too. And I think that's a bad omission on your part. Very quickly then, three questions. I remain hugely concerned about the response I had from the managing director in scrutiny last month about the corporate director post that I've just referred to. Basically, he told us it was no loss at all to not have one of his most senior directors available at a time of unprecedented crisis. What I would like to know from you is that why, if that was the case, and he knew that on his appointment last September? Why then did he not advise you of such and bring forward proposals at that time instead of waiting until we were in crisis? Secondly, the report talks about 720,000 pounds worth of savings from the organisational review for the senior members. I have to say, I'm not sure I understand where these savings come from. The report we saw in September last year identified 270,000 pounds worth of savings as a result of the senior manager's management restructure. And that figure now seems to have grown threefold. So could you please tell me if you've got rid of more posts that we don't know about? And you know, if we have, they've also been outside of any formal restructure and scrutiny, which is very unfortunate. And then my final, very quick question is about the amount of information that we had about the corporate director post. We got an awful lot of information about the chief exec post. Indeed, I recall we had a special council meeting. But in the case of the corporate director, silence. And no doubt there was a payoff involved there as well. And I know you don't have to reveal the amount of it's under 100,000 pounds. But surely, in the interest of openness, perhaps you could let members know what was the cost? As I'm sure there is nothing to hide there. So they're my three questions, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffries, councillor Nightingale.
I apologise if you feel there's an omission, that I didn't mention my appreciation of the work of the previous director of economic growth. And I do associate myself with the points that were made by councillor Davies earlier on. I just leave it at that. On the savings, the details of the savings were announced last year. If there are any changes, I'll let you know in writing. I'm unaware of posts being deleted. And I'll take the third point that you made as a comment rather than the question.
Thank you councillor Nightingale, councillor Carl Quartermaine, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for your report councillor Nightingale. And I would like to echo the comments regarding the excellent work of our staff and of our director, our exit director, Sarah Robson. And that she is a sad loss to this borough. Apologies also, I was getting a lot of distortion when you were speaking. So if I'm repeating anything from your opening remarks, so that you've already answered, I apologise. But there was a lot of information in your report. But as I read through, I kept wondering when you were going to get to the part about the current status of the council's finances. Sadly, there isn't anything to indicate what position our bank account is in. So my first question is, what is our current status? As you state, we've had a couple of tranches of funding, albeit one was a larger amount than the other, for some adjustment reasoning. But there is no breakdown here of how the council has used that 8.6 million. I'm aware that that is elsewhere. Can you provide a brief summary of how that went and where that went? Also, many projections in this report, either regarding the future position in the borough. Are we facing a financial crisis in Redcar and Cleveland? Certainly, one of the things most residents will want to know is, has the government left this council in a difficult financial position that will affect our council tax at a later date? And at the beginning of the crisis, the council received a lot of grants that were outstanding to us, meaning for a short time we were cash-rich. Is that still the case? Are we cash-rich at the moment? After the cyber attack, which was quite unique in this country, the government gave this council an assurance that it would provide the financial support we needed. It was estimated that we would require something like 11 to 14 million to compensate our loss. Is that still the estimated figure? And has the government stuck by its promise? Please, can you update us on that? And I'm concerned that the government may not be standing by promises to fully compensate us during the Covid-19 pandemic. And for good reason. At the start of the pandemic, local authorities were assured by ministers that they would be reimbursed for the extra financial burden of the pandemic. But then later declined to reassure councils that we will be fully paid back for that financial loss. The government's recently announced 500 million pounds for councils. But the LGA tell us that this is likely to be around 9.5 billion pounds short of agreements. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Quartermaine, councillor Nightingale.
Yes, well, that was pretty wide ranging. And I think some of the questions are impossible for me to answer. Especially, I can't speak for the government. What I do want to say is that the finance officers, that the 8.6 million funding provided by the government obviously is not likely to be enough. And representations continue to be made for more funding to the government, along with neighbouring councils. More funding has since been agreed. On the 2nd of July, there was, as I mentioned in the, I think I mentioned in the report, the government announced a further package in what they call the next stage. Obviously, we'll have to make a review of the medium-term impact when the government's autumn spending review comes out. On the issue of council tax, clearly, it would be unwise to speculate on what is going to happen. It may also, may depend on what the government does in terms of the cap and in terms of what it allows us to raise in council tax. It really is, as I said throughout the report and throughout the commentary on the report that I've just made, that it really is unwise to speculate on what is actually going on.
Thank you councillor, sorry councillor Nightingale, councillor Watts, please. Councillor Watts, please.
Okay. Thank you. I did submit it in writing because we were asked to at previous meetings to speed things on. But at least you're prepared, thank you. In the light of the finance officers informing members of the resource scrutiny committee held on the 10th of June 2020, the details of our financial position were not available. I would like to ask councillor Nightingale why on May 22nd and June 18th, he informed the media of the council's dire financial situation and he stated that an emergency council budget may be needed. Since the start of Covid-19, I, as a member of the resource scrutiny committee, have frequently asked for financial information but have received no response. Queries included what payments have we received from government for Covid-19 issues? This question was widely answered and given to the resource scrutiny members on the 10th of June. Secondly, details of comparison costs of running the council using homeworking and reducing services compared to last year's cost of running the services during the same period. Three, payments made in excess of government grants for the Covid-19 issues. No response has been received. But in councillor Nightingale's report, paragraph 219, he refers to the need for extra spending, but is not specific. Paragraph 219 refers to the regular Covid-19 management data of the financial impact of Covid-19 sent to MHCLG on a regular basis. This excess spend should be easily available, therefore for members as requested. Paragraph 3.28 lists the IT improvements made in the light of Covid-19. But when I mentioned in an email to the finance department on another matter, the 800,000 pounds of funding available to help local councils with their Covid-19 recovery and renewal, a finance officer contacted me on the 1st of July to query where I had obtained this information. It was in the council's own Covid-19 update on the June 18th. And the first day it was up for applications was the 1st of July. It sounds as if Redcar Borough Council have missed this opportunity for funding. Covid-19 plus lockdown has resulted in a high number of job losses and residents on reduced income in our area. I myself have been diagnosed with post-traumatic stress and many of our residents are probably also suffering with a range of mental health problems. Councillor Nightingale's alarmist media warnings without factual backing could have exacerbated residents' ongoing concerns and one was unnecessary at that time without further exploration of our finances and future changes to our way of working.
Thank you councillor Watts, councillor Nightingale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I could reiterate the situation that in working out the financial impact of the council, we have to look at the uncertain aspects of, continuing uncertain aspects of financing in the council and whether we get government funding or not. There will be an update on the 4th of August cabinet meeting when we'll have information, probably more detail about the government's support and the impact of the government's emergency budget that's just taken place yesterday and the emergency situation. On the resources committee's statements about the council's financial position and on the emergency budget, as the finance officers stated that they determine the ultimate impacts, which are uncertain, and it will be speculative to give statistics at the moment. And it would probably be unhelpful and counterproductive. I think I answered partly some of this to councillor Quartermaine. Again, the point I'm trying to make is that it is far too early to speculate on what is actually going to happen. And I have never said that there will be an emergency budget. And I've never said there may or may not be an emergency budget. What I have said is that budgets are the embodiment of any organisation's objectives for the period ahead. Consequently, what I've repeatedly said, and this is in the press as well, is that all budgets are subject to be monitored, reviewed and changed in the light of developments throughout the year. And this is a rational and reasonable position to adopt. On the point about government payments to the council for the Covid-19, there's a really detailed report that was circulated to all members and I hope that councillor Watts has read it. On the working from home running costs, it's very difficult to quantify. There are some extra expenditures such as extra equipment and laptops. But some of the laptops were actually being provided anyway as part of the cyber attack recovery programme that we had. There will also be savings in energy use and travel claims and with benefits to the carbon neutral objectives of the council and possibly less office space in future. But to repeat, the overall budget impact will depend on how things unfold until later in the year and on any government contribution to the cyber recovery costs. On payments in excess of government grants for Covid-19, government support for mitigating income losses, foregone savings plans and the reduction in local tax revenues are not for extra spending. This is not for extra spending, this is what I want to emphasise. It's for those three things I've just mentioned. A budget update will be provided in August as we see it at that particular point in time, after a detailed review of the latest government support package when it's available. The resources committees, I've said before, will have the chance to scrutinise that beforehand. On the point in paragraph 219, I just repeat the point that just waited until the August cabinet meeting. On the quote in paragraph 328 that lists the IT improvements made in the light of Covid-19 and the missing 800,000 pound budget funding opportunity. This is really part of business as usual rather than something to do with the Covid-19 issues. This is about 800,000 pounds nationally for local digital Covid-19 challenge. And this will support projects to combat the direct result of Covid-19 to be completed in two months and used by all councils. So this is something where the demand for the cyber attack and the prospects will be shared by all councils. And there doesn't seem to be much point in the council being involved in that. On the accusation of alarmist statements, obviously, if I took offence, I'd be particularly upset by the insinuations of what councillor Watts is saying. So I categorically deny there could be any causal connection between my statements I've made and the effects on anyone's mental health. The council has supported residents in need, especially vulnerable people, with deliveries of food and through the shielding hub. And the council will continue to do so and help people, especially those facing job losses and reduced income. For example, the social fund is available. And clearly, I endorse the statement that was made by the leader of the council earlier. Just let me say this. The hallmark of everything I have said has been to advocate caution and safety, to be prudent about the council's response to the double challenges that we've faced and to put the interests of residents first. That, I think, is, and I repeat this, is rational and realistic. Furthermore, we're making representations to the government for more funding. And the responsible thing to do, in the best interest of the council, residents and members of the public in general, is to do that. But it's in the nature of the process that the government does not rush with answers to our requests. So it's essential to mitigate as far as possible any financial burden that COVID-19 has placed on local council taxpayers, along with other councils. This has been a success in securing financial support, and obviously we look forward to more. I hope this series of answers have gone somewhere to satisfy councillor Watts's issues.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Councillor Philip Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the portfolio holder for the assurance that we will be having detailed financial provision in August, and we certainly look forward to that. There are some elements in the report I would just briefly, Mr Mayor, like to refer to. There is reference to apprenticeships, and clearly the authority has done very well indeed in the numbers and the quality of provision of educational support. What I would like clarification on is what progress we are making in terms of providing apprenticeship training for our woodland strategy, which we are still awaiting with anticipation. As part of our climate change targets, we have said that a great number of trees need to be planted in the borough, and those that are already planted and will be planted will need managing. And the establishment that we have currently is quite inappropriate, inadequate in providing that service. And part of the ethos of training is to look at what can best be delivered in terms of also meeting up with our strategies. So I would ask again where we have got to with building into our apprenticeship training programme that element of our need. I'm pleased to see on the asset front that we are conducting a survey of all of our assets, and how we are going to make better use of them. However, I was concerned at the last scrutiny meeting where our global asset policy was discussed, and the new asset strategy was agreed in principle, what we did not receive was a listing of all of the assets that the local authority has. So in response to a request that I made at the scrutiny meeting, I was provided yesterday with an expansive list of what purported to be all of the assets within the authority ownership. However, looking at my particular ward, or a ward of which I am an elected member, I could see that there were certain assets missing from the register. So I have asked if there can be clarification as to why they are not listed. Now, if this is replicated in any way across the borough, this would be a disappointment, to say the least, and would not allow us to have a fully implementable asset management strategy. I also am of the view that this list was not circulated to all members, in as far as I couldn't see the circulation list. So could I just simply ask that this list is definitely circulated to all ward members, so that they can have the opportunity of seeing what we have on our official list? So these are the two main points I would like to make, but I would also like to echo concern that the government appears to be dragging its feet on reaching a resolution over the IT refund, that while we did not get it in writing, that we would have full recompense for all the money that was necessary to repair our IT system. I think there was given an understanding that that would be the case. So I would hope that that will be fulfilled in the very, very near future.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Nightingale?
Thank you for those questions. On the first question about apprenticeships, clearly last year we exceeded the target, but this year there is a problem, obviously, because of the social distancing, and supervision will be a problem. I couldn't possibly answer your question specifically about the woodland issue, but obviously I'll make sure that you get a written reply to that. On the assets, I think you make a very good point. I made a tour of most of the council's assets over the run of the year, and I agree in principle that it would be very useful to have a list of these, and I think you're very fortunate to have been able to see this before I have as well. So I'll try and make sure that we get that circulated, and we'll also try to deal with your missing assets as well. On the third point, I totally agree with you that it is unfortunate that we've been having to wait for so long for the government to provide us with the proper recompense for the cyber attack that we experienced. Totally agree, and I think it's important that we do keep up the pressure to try and get the money paid. I do know that the leader and the MP for Redcar were involved in discussions last week. We did expect an early resolution of that. It hasn't materialised, and we will await results. As I said, it's part of the nature of the process when you're dealing with the government, that they may well be dragging their feet. I think maybe the date that we should look forward to is the 22nd of July, when Parliament goes into recess, and it usually is the opportunity for the government to make announcements, and then go away, of course. But I totally agree with you, it is time that this was sorted out.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Councillor Alec Brown, please. Councillor Brown?
Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hello. You hear me now, Billy?
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor Nightingale, for that report. When I was talking before, I realised I was muted, that I do have some sympathy for you having to manage the finances in, as you rightly said, very uncertain terms. In fact, I think when you introduced your report, you said you were looking to avoid any sort of risky expenditure due to the uncertainty of the finances. And you replied to councillor Chris Massey, we're trying to, well, not even forecast, but to count the incurred cost already to the council as a very difficult task. With that in mind, I just wanted to ask a question about a particular press release and investment the council have made over the last few weeks. Whilst in principle I support any betterment of the borough, we bought, I believe, a derelict church in Loftus for a certain amount of monies, I think it was about £50,000, with the plan to invest and to, you know, to open the building for public use in the future. Whilst I do not support that, I'm wondering at this particular time in lockdown with finances so uncertain, is that a prudent expenditure of monies at this particular time? I'm just wondering what your rationale was for green stamping that purchase at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown.
Thank you very much for that question. Yes, I think the point I was trying to make is that we don't want to make commitments that we may regret in the future. You're now actually, yeah, anyway, we'll... Excuse me? Right, sorry about that. As far as the Loftus Congregational Church purchase is concerned, I think this is a splendid idea, because it's quite a historic building, and it is important that we do preserve these assets in the community. But you must remember that this is part of the Loftus High Street project, and it has to be seen in that particular context. It is intended, I understand, to be used as an arts centre in the future, and this is something that we should very much support. Clearly, the timing of this purchase is related to our bid to the government for extra funding for the Loftus High Street scheme, and so it is perfectly justified, and of course it is part of the capital programme.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. I have two more people to speak. Councillor Anigan next, and then councillor Kay, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a comment, if you don't mind, councillor Nightingale. That money for the church at Loftus without of the £1 million that was put by for the previous administration going forward with Loftus, it isn't the fact that this administration is doing anything different. And can I remind members that we actually lost £2 million at Kirkleatham on an overspend? Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Anigan. We go to councillor Kay, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, as an East Cleveland independent, you know, I have to support everything that's going to improve Loftus. It's in a rundown state at the moment, and it deserves every penny it gets. I just have one proviso, however, and I repeat this every time that church on the corner near the traffic lights is mentioned. Can we please save the outdoor pulpit, which is absolutely unique and should have been protected in some way in the past? Of course, it's a pulpit on the corner of the church whereby a preacher, in times gone past when there was very little traffic, he could talk to the congregation and perhaps people who weren't keen on going to church out in the street. It's a unique feature, and I hope money will be found to restore it and preserve it for posterity.
I'm sure it'd be a valuable asset to the community if councillor Kay were able to use that pulpit, but I certainly welcome the comments that are made there in support of this development, and I certainly agree with the points that were made by the leader of the council.
Another point of art, please.
I just hope that the scheme for Loftus High Street goes ahead, and it is, like a lot of these things, ones we plan and there's something that we actually do, and do it on time effectively.
Point of personal explanation, Mr Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, since councillor Nightingale has mentioned me, yes, only one thing could improve, restoring the pulpit at Loftus, and that would be to bring it up to Lingdale and fix it to the tavern, and then I would be very pleased to speak from it.
Thank you, councillor Kay.
I couldn't possibly comment on that, Mr Mayor.
Right, I have no more speakers. Thank you, councillor Nightingale, for your conference report under difficult circumstances. We'll now move on to item nine, which is to report to the leader of the council, decisions taken under urgency provisions. Councillor Anigan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm sure members have got the paperwork, just to give you some explanation as to why this is happening. This is special urgency provisions, and it has to be reported by the leader of the council on a quarterly basis. Council members are requested to note that due to issues arising from COVID-19, the following decisions have been taken during the last three months using the urgency provisions as set out in the council's access to information procedure. I will note them, Mr Mayor. One was the additional fees to care home providers to mitigate COVID-19, and that was a cost pressure. Two, local authority discretionary grant scheme to assist local businesses mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. And three was children's legal services contract extensions. This actually, members, goes to scrutiny committees, and if you actually look at 3.1, you will actually see that the additional fees to care homes were signed by the cabinet member, that was done in consultation with councillor Shealy Hollyoak, who was the Chair of Adult and Communities Improvement Committee. The second one there for the local authority discretionary grants scheme to assist local businesses was done under cabinet with councillor Glyn Nightingale, and agreed by councillor Chris Massey, Chair of Resources Scrutiny. And the third one that we had there was the general exception with Colin, and it was children's legal services contracts, and it was to implement an optional contract extension, and that came under council Alison Barnes, who is the cabinet member for children and families, and that actually went to Caroline Japson, who is the Chair of Children's Services Scrutiny and Improvement Committee. So this, members, is actually to note, and it is necessary. Whether we will be having any further of these coming through, given the situation that we're in at the moment, we will see. So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Anigan. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor. I think one of the features of that is that it's another example of where the council has, during this epidemic, have been working together, and I think we should send our appreciation to the three chairmen of the scrutiny committees for their collaboration in this, and these were effective, very sensible decisions, and I was put into practice quickly what was needed to be done. Finished that, Mr Mayor?
Thank you. Councillor Sue Jeffrey, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. My question is just a bit of process, really. At paragraph 2.2, at the first bullet point, it talks about the notice must also be published with reasons for the urgency, at least five working days in advance of the decision being taken. And again, paragraph below 2.3, second bullet point, a notice setting out this position and detailing the reasons for the urgency must be published. I'm sure the process has all worked very well, but I don't recall seeing any notices published. I know we've been getting, after the event, lists of delegated decisions from David Boville... decisions from David Boville circulated. But, but where, if at all, are these things being published in advance so that we can comment or perhaps, I don't know, comment on, on the urgency, I suppose, as much as anything else? Thank you.
My understanding, Mr Mayor, that the process was followed. However, Constable Jeffrey, I will check on that and let you know when that was published. Bearing in mind that we followed full procedure by going to the chairs of scrutiny and working together with the cabinet members, I will get that information for you.
Mr Mayor, I wonder if I could just, just come back in on that. I think it's, I think, I'm sure the process all worked really well. At the end of it, it's the beginning of the process where members were alerted through the publication of the reason for the urgency and what the issue is. And I, I haven't seen that. And, you know, maybe I've just missed it, but I don't think I have.
Mr Mayor, can I ask if we can actually bring Steve Newton in, please, if he is available?
Right, we're going to bring in Steve now. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yes, the, the notices are published on the council's website with the details of the forward plan and other delegated decisions. So if members aren't aware of that, then we can certainly circulate that. So in the future, you know, there's, there's ready access to those notices. But, yeah, they are published on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Can we, can we take that account like the, as agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move on to item ten, motions. One motion received from Constable Cal Quartermaine and duly seconded by Constable Brown, that this council gives thanks and praise to all council employees, social workers, frontline staff in the NHS, and key workers from retail, logistics, and all other sectors who work throughout this historic and unprecedented time of pandemic, and that it is recognised that these workers risk their lives every day just by going to work to ensure the safety and health of the public and to keep vital services moving during the current COVID-19 outbreak. I don't want to put this to the vote. Can we just take that as agreed? Thank you. Item eleven, to point members, the following changes have been received and circulated.
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair. Sorry, don't interrupt. There's point of order. Surely the motion should be proposed by the proposer and seconded by the seconder, and we should all have an opportunity to debate it. You can't just read it out and say it's agreed.
Well, under normal, normal circumstances, that would happen. But can you see anybody in, in this establishment objecting to that motion? And in fact, it's not a motion, it's a statement. But go ahead then, go ahead then, do what you want to do.
But it's not, it's not my motion.
Please.
It's not my motion, Chair, but the point isn't about whether or not we disagree with it. The point is about whether or not people wish to make comment and statements about the content. Thank you.
The point is, Constable Jeffries, it is not a motion, it's a statement. But I will put it to the vote. So could I have a proposer and a second, please?
Can I speak, Mr Mayor?
Go ahead.
It may be a statement, but it is a motion. This is why we brought it forward. There's no objection to it. The, the reason for the motion is to allow councillors to express their praise to personalities, people, communities, businesses, et cetera, in their communities that they personally want to thank, as well as the general thanks. So it was an opportunity, really, for councillors to express on public record their gratitude for the support during this pandemic. Thank you. You need to turn your mic on, Bill.
This was read out at my opening statement and the Constable Anigan statement. So now I will put it to the people. Can I have a proposer and a second, please?
Well, I propose Milton.
Right, and a second.
I'll second, Constable Brock.
Thank you. Has anybody on it got any objections or can this be carried? Constable Jeffries.
Yes, yes, Chair. I, I can see in the chat column, a number of people who've indicated that they want to speak, including Constable Sheila Hollyoak. And I think we, as, as with any motion, you would accept speakers when they indicate they want to speak. And I'd be grateful if we can carry on, please, with the debate, as would be the normal case with a motion. And if you feel you don't have the advice you need to be able to do that, perhaps Mr Newton can advise.
Thank you, Mrs Jeffries. Sheila Hollyoak, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's Sheila Hollyoak. Actually, I actually indicated that I wish to speak on the delegated decisions rather than this. I suppose I'll mention this as well. The delegated decisions, I was quite happy to sign because obviously our care homes, as everybody knows, are going through an extremely difficult time. And I think we need to support them. And I think in the future, we will be supporting them more than we are even at the current moment. But going back to our giving our thanks, I would certainly like to thank a couple of organisations within Gisborough, particularly the Bridge, who've done an absolutely superb job in supporting people at this time, as I'm sure many other people have been. So thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Constable Alec Brown, please. Constable Alec Brown's not responding. We move on to Constable Hannah Ware.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I welcome this motion very much indeed. It's been very heartening to see the thanks and praise for key workers shown on our very streets throughout the lockdown. Clearly, a new spirit is abroad, and whatever comes of it afterwards, it is surely the opposing spirit to all the hatred and deliberate divisiveness of the last four years. Perhaps it will turn out that love is the only thing a Russian bot factory cannot manipulate. I would like to add my thanks to all our residents for their fortitude. I was expecting the worst initially, and quite bemused when I stood in the supermarket and saw that all the toilet roll had gone, but the frozen food was untouched. Surely in an apocalypse, you would need to have the former. If you had need of the former, you'd also require the latter. But as it turned out, the vast majority of us have shown fortitude and kindness, remained civilised and obeyed the law. Nowhere has that new spirit been more evident to me than in Leaven Street in Saltburn, where the residents of all political persuasions and beliefs have looked after each other and celebrated at six o'clock every day. I'm not a resident of that street myself, but they've let me onto their community page anyway. Hooray for Leaven Street for showing us the way. I think in future, instead of calling myself a socialist, I'll call myself a Leaven Streetist. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Constable Hannah Ware. Constable King, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to express my gratitude for all of the volunteers and admin of the Mask and New Mask Coronavirus Support Group, which expanded to also cover Redcar and Dormantstown, has been running for over four months and have done probably now close to 1,500 tasks of shopping welfare checks, whilst also collecting for Redcar Area Food Bank, NHS key staff, and also they managed to do deliveries to Teeside Hospice, Rotten Hospital, Redcar Hospital, and Rosebury Park with care packages for all of the patients who weren't receiving visitors, as well as snacks and supplies for the staff. During that time, a lot of our residents have actually donated money for the volunteers' petrol money, which they've refused and put into a fund, which has allowed us to send a substantial amount of money to Teeside Taxi Heroes, which has been helping people who can't afford to get taxis. They've also donated money to Chris Cave Foundation for food packages, sponsored packed lunches for the Ladies of Steel at Dormantstown Primary, and also helped with packing that up and delivering them every weekend. A huge thank to the community spirit from everybody across those areas. And I know there's other people like East Cleveland Good Neighbour Support, and as Sheila's mentioned, the Bridge. I think what it's shown is we've all worked together, referring to each other when people are outside our areas or capabilities. And I think it shows that there's true strength of community spirit in this area. And I'd like to congratulate everybody that's been involved on, you know, large or small. Thank you.
Constable Carly, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to raise with the fact that the community have come together in a state of crisis, really, and especially our volunteers have stepped up their mark once again. Volunteers just seem to be the backbone of our community at the moment. But especially Chris and Debbie Pauley and their daughter, Tori, who every weekend. Since lockdown started, men delivered, start on a Friday night, buttering the bread, all three of them, and they don't stop till Sunday. They did 264 cream teas, 520 food boxes for pensioners, plus held five competitions with lots of prizes for the children that aren't just members of their youth club. They've opened it up to every child within the community. So with that, they've also had the volunteers that have been massive, as you said, Karen, your group has been massive in helping deliver those packages out on a Saturday and Sunday morning and afternoon. It's also been the school have stepped up and had teachers delivering to them. And I mean, even for VE Day, myself and Constable Brown paid for their school packed lunches so that every child within Dormantstown ward had a picnic to celebrate VE Day. And I'm pleased to say that they've gained three more funders that are going to help and hopefully provide more packed lunches throughout the six week school summer holidays. So I would just like to do a big thumbs up to all the volunteers, not just those in our ward, but across nationally. Volunteers have been the backbone of every community. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Carly. Constable Pallister, please.
Can you hear me, Chair? Yeah. Hello?
Yeah, got you now.
You can hear me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could, could I thank Doug Jennings, Peter Quantrill, his partner Dee, and his dad, Paul, and my partner, Geoff, my husband, Geoff, for delivering 1,800 hot free course two, two, hot free course meals. And, sorry, hot two course free meals to 1,800 vulnerable and elderly residents. And it's been an absolute pleasure to see that we could help so many people. And I think it's shown across Redcar in Cleveland how much we need and we should value the community sector. It's just been amazing what everyone's done, not just in Grangestown, but across Redcar in Cleveland. So I'd just like to thank all the volunteers and the community groups across the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Pallister. Constable Davies, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to pick up really on a, on a few things that obviously Constable Carly mentioned about volunteers being the backbone. Yeah, I think volunteers have been the backbone of our communities for a long, long time. And they're always there when we need to rely on them to, to provide support and assistance in our, in our areas. And it's always heart wrenching to know that, that they're always there for us and they're always in, in and around looking after people, especially that need assistance. Karen mentioned the East Cleveland Good Neighbours scheme. And I think obviously, as we've started to go around a few councillors, there's been different examples of, of individuals, groups and organisations that we could probably go on forever listing. And I just wondered if, I know, I know that the, the motions obviously got the intention of doing everything right round, and I don't really want to have to make an amendment. But I just think if everyone's in agreement with it, we just maybe make a slight sentence addition in. And whether or not we're allowed to later on list all those organisations and, and groups to, to that motion officially, given that we can't all be there to write everything down, would be that after the words logistics and all other sectors, we just insert the words, including our army of volunteer groups, organisations and individuals listed below, and then just put them at the very end. I think that would probably be a bit fitting as well as part of this motion.
Was it not already passed, the motion?
No.
No. Yeah.
Mr Mayor, I think adding the list later would be difficult, and it would probably bring with it the risk of missing someone out. So I, I think the amendment in itself was fine if it just stops, stopped short of having the list after it.
Right, thanks, Steve. We'll go to the next. Does somebody want to second Constable Davies' amendment?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any objections?
Yeah, I object to that, Mr Mayor. We've already started the motion. We're already into the tributes. And then halfway through, now Constable Wayne Davies wants to make an amendment. You know, we should be making that amendment at the beginning of the motion.
Can't we just work our way through the speakers, please?
I thought. On a point of order, Mr Mayor. Constable Quartermaine's totally out of order there because an amendment can be made at any point during the, I'm sure Mr Newton will, will confirm that. And it, all it really remains for the mover to do is, is to accept that as an, as, as an amendment. And it can be, I would have thought that was hardly controversial, the point that has been made. When, when Constable, as far as I was concerned, when Constable Davies was talking about making a list, I thought we were, he was proposing that we should have a citation to all the people who've been helping, that is, that is published either in the council's magazine or is put up at the, the civic centre. That would be a really good idea. Just like, Mr Mayor, I've been at meetings where we've had amendments and then further amendments. I'm sure Constable Kay can remember the situation in the, in the eighties when this was quite routine.
I agree with you as far as procedure is concerned.
Mr Mayor, can I make a point of order? We're in a meeting here and there's a, there's an order to the way that things go on. We can't just all start calling out. We need to take control of this meeting.
But you just, you just did that Constable Quartermaine. You just called out when somebody was speaking. So, so Constable Kay is speaking, and then I'll come to you. Thanks.
Well, I never thought this motion would split the coalition. But I don't agree with it, putting a list at the end, because there are many. putting a list at the end, because there are many people who've done, who've carried out this help on a voluntary basis, who, as I think Mr Newton advised, would feel left out were we to list the so-called goodies. You know, a lot of people that were doing good work and are still doing good work without any recognition at all. And these are the very people who'll be left out of such a list. And therefore, I believe the motion should, I don't mind the little bitty put in at first, but not to list the groups. I think it's political suicide, to be quite honest, because if you put 10 at the end, there'll be 20 who think they should be there. And so it's very dangerous ground. And I don't think the council should go down this route at all. You know, when there's a tragedy or a crisis, this seems to inspire people to good works. And it's a pity sometimes that it can't carry on into peacetime or post pandemic time. Let's hope it does this time. But let's not forget the small people, the people who helped the person next door who perhaps aren't organised in a group at all. And I just think I just feel that we've got to cause a lot of trouble for ourselves and we should just leave it open. And then anybody who has done good works or any group who has done good works can accept the motion as referring to them.
Thank you, councillor Kay. Councillor Quarterman, do you want to put your point of order, please?
I thought you were going to say pound of flesh then. I just think the, the motion as it stands, it's just perfectly fine. There's no reason to be messing about with it. We can just get on with it. If, if councillor Wayne Davies wants to put something together so we can at least see it in the chat box, then, then fine. Okay, there's attach that. But I disagree as well. If we really want to put a list of people's names, we're bound to leave people out. And, you know, I think that's a futile act. So that's why the motion's there as it is, so that councillors can both personally thank people that have supported this community and generally make a point. It's just, it's just an opportunity. I don't, I don't see any reason to add any changes to it.
Want to now bring in Steve Newton to clarify the situation.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Amendments don't have to be in writing and can be made at any time during the course of the debate. So at the minute, we've got an amendment which is validly proposed and seconded by councillor Davies, which did include the proposal around the list. I advised that I think the list would be unwise. We couldn't add it later. And also there's a risk of missing organisations out. So my suggestion would either be that councillor Davies removes that bit from his amendment, and that can be agreed, or perhaps councillor Quarterman might agree the amendment in that form, i.e. missing the list.
Councillor Davies.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm just literally I've accidentally just knocked it off. But yeah, I'm just putting something in the chat box. There. So basically, just the dot, dot, dot refers to, I'm not writing the whole thing out, obviously, but logistics and all other sectors, and then a comma, and then include, which I put in brackets, including our army of volunteer groups, organisations and individuals. That's it. And then I'll say close and then carry on from where it finished with who worked through this pandemic, blah, blah, blah. That makes sense and it's easier for everyone.
Councillor Quarterman?
If there's no further objections, that's fine. Just go with that.
Okay. Right, we move on to the next speaker, which is councillor Lynne Pallister, please.
Mr Mayor, I've already thanked the individuals who's helped us deliver 1800 hot meals free to vulnerable and elderly in Grangetown and surrounding areas. And I can, I can repeat the names again. That's Paul Quantrell, his wife Dee and his dad Paul, and Doug Jennings and my husband Jeff as well. Can I just add to that though and thank the funders? Because I know we've thanked the voluntary groups and, and without the funders, a lot of this work wouldn't have been it possible. So I'd also like to thank SABIC in, on Wilton's site, Inius, On Seal Sands, Mercer's Charity Foundation and Tees Valley Community Foundation for making it possible. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Pallister. Councillor Cook?
Thank you. I assume we're carrying on because I think the initial amendment was supposed to end this thanking of people, but it got changed. So I'd like to thank Theresa from the Chris Cave Foundation, who mobilised very quickly to move into the community centre, provide nearly 1500 households with food parcels and some of them up to 160 families on a weekly basis. And I know she would like me to thank the volunteers, the drivers, the public who donated funds and also the funders who made it all possible. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Cook. Councillor Alec Brown? Councillor Brown? We'll go on to councillor Ovens.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Within Westside Ward, we have significant areas of elderly and shielding residents. And I'd just like to thank family and friends and neighbours who have supported these people and ensured that this community spirit is there. Malcolm and I have been going around the ward, talking to people who stood out in their gardens, checking they're okay and everything. But the people have pulled together where they haven't had family, they've had jolly good neighbours. So I'd like to thank them. Plus the small businesses in Redcar who arranged delivery of fruit and meat, which has been used by those people who couldn't get out and about. Some people have been very stoic about it and are still in lockdown because they have very vulnerable people that they're caring for. So I'd like to thank them for their determined attitude. The other thing was, very, very quickly, friends of Redcar Cemetery and friends of Borough Park individually went in to maintain some of the areas, as well as what the council workers have been doing. But now we're able to go back to proper gardening groups. Particularly the cemetery has been very much appreciated because we've had a significant number of people coming to visit graves. And it really means a lot to them if the place is looking in good order. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. Councillor Alison Barnes, please.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, adding to the list of people who have been really helpful, the, all the volunteers at the Redcar Food Bank who have filled and delivered boxes of provisions to those in need across the whole borough since the start of the lockdown and are still continuing still, even though fortunately demand has diminished. So I just wanted to add them to the unofficial stroke official list.
Thank you. Councillor Steve Kerr, please.
I think I've said what I wanted to say, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Lanigan, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You've lost my picture. I don't know where it's gone. It's disappeared.
It's on my, it's on my sideboard.
Is it? Right, okay, right, fine. I just, Alison actually said what I wanted to say. We, there was a lot of work going on in our sports centre here. Dozens of our staff were coming in, as well as our drivers. And everybody made an awful effort, including a lot of our borough councillors. They came in and packed boxes as well. Just want you to know, Mr Mayor, I'm an expert at making a box, something I never thought that I would learn to do. I think we had just under 5,000 going out worthwhile experience. Everybody pulled together. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Lanigan. Councillor Sandra Smith, please.
Again, again, it was just to thank everybody that's been working from the credit union in volunteering into the community. They've delivered over 2,000 prescriptions, shopping trips and everything else. And it's just, it is a fantastic spirit throughout the community. And they've delivered throughout TS6 for the last three months and are still delivering today.
Thanks, councillor Smith. Councillor Bill Clark?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On behalf of other veterans that are serving on the Borough Council at the moment as well, I think we'd rather remiss as the Armed Forces Champion if we omitted HM Forces from the list that we seem to be adding to. You need to remember, of course, these, these people didn't have the luxury of going home on a night time. They were being deployed and they're being deployed for weeks on end. And they were, they were travelling around the country as well, risking their lives, as many of the volunteers were, going to different locations. I think it's important that we just recognise this fact, please, and that, you know, we don't forget that because as I said, we have a number of veterans on the council. And I'd just like to add there, these people and our thanks to them because they're supporting not only our community, but all the other communities throughout the country as well. So thank you very much, Mr Mayor, my fellow veteran.
Councillor Clark, are you, are you proposing a further amendment? Or are you happy to go with what we've got?
Well, I don't think I was confusing the issue. I just wanted to add them to the list that people were putting everybody else on. I just didn't want them to be, HM Forces to be overlooked, as I am the Armed Forces Champion for the Borough Council.
Right, okey doke, I agree with you. Can we have a second for that, please? I'll second that motion. Thank you. Councillor Quarterman, have you got any objections to that?
No, none at all. But I thought Armed Forces was already on the amendment there, wasn't it? But whatever, I'm fine with it. This isn't a contentious issue.
Right, councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm a bit confused because I thought Wayne altered his amendment so that we wouldn't have a list. And I thought Carl agreed to that. Because all the names that are coming out now, I think if we start on a list, we're going to upset what is the silent majority.
I'm passing this over to Steve Newton. Thanks.
Yes, councillor Watts. I think what councillor Davies originally proposed was a very long list of individual organisations down to community level. Councillor Davies proposed an amendment which was generic, you know, covering things like volunteers, et cetera. So that was accepted. And councillor Clark has proposed that we simply add to the end of that Armed Forces as a generic, you know, bit of the list as well. So we're not proposing a long list, just that very generic list at the end.
I'm sorry, but people in between seem to go back to naming names. But if it's just adding another organisation, that's fine.
Right, we still haven't got councillor Brown who'll put his name up to speak. Is he there? Councillor Brook, then, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, it was just to extend my thanks to Lyn and all the volunteers at Grangetown United here in Grangetown for supporting our residents of the wider, and the wider community. Also to extend thanks to Weyland Community Centre and their volunteers at their food bank that have supported Grangetown and the wider TS6 area. And also Tees Together with Tonya Nixon, who was supported right across the borough. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers. Can we agree on this motion being passed? Right, thank you. That's passed.
Mr Mayor, can I sum up, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and yeah, and listening to these testimonials is really moving and inspiring. And I'd like to thank everybody who's contributed to this discussion. You can see just how difficult it would be to thank everyone personally. But, you know, and for me, to be able to thank all those who have been active throughout this period would take me well of my allotted time. But I would like to give special thanks to our NHS responders, our food bank staff and volunteers, our council staff and councillors, our armed forces. And personal thanks as well to Theresa Cave of the Cave Foundation, Tonya Nixon of the Tees Charity, Linda White, Jay Palin, Moloch Shohiar, Darren Lee, Gareth Howell and Gary Taylor. This has been an exceptionally challenging time met by our exceptionally strong community. On behalf of the Labour Group, I give our heartfelt thanks to all our key workers, home carers, social care workers and NHS staff who have risked their health and lives to protect us and keep vital services moving. We also give praise to the amazing contributions of our frontline workers, our education workers, transport workers, businesses who volunteered and donated and diversified their operations. And of course, to the thousands of volunteers and residents determined to support the vulnerable and the workforce, the workers of Redcar and Cleveland in any way that they could. They've supported the council and NHS services by delivering humanitarian packages and by responding to needs. And they've given comfort, company and care by phoning and visiting and looking after our most vulnerable residents. They've created and provided PPE and hand sanitizers when the care sector was desperately short of supply. They've provided food and hot meals to our neighbours and healthcare shift workers. And they've offered shelter to those who were desperate for help during this time. And they've cleaned, tidied and even litter picked in our communities as part of their daily exercise. They showed our care workers how much they mattered every Thursday. And they gave us rainbows in windows and art on the walls. And they chalk messages of hope and happiness on our pavements. And even I was hopscotching home on an evening at times. We are so blessed in Redcar and Cleveland. Our community, businesses, groups and individuals are truly We are so blessed in Redcar and Cleveland, our community, businesses, groups and individuals are truly amazing people. And we are so very proud and grateful. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Quarterman. I'm sure your sentiments are endorsed by all of the people in this authority. With no more speakers, the motion has been carried. So we'll move on to item 11, which is to appoint members. Have you all got a copy? And if so, can these be agreed? I'll take that as agreed then, and we'll move on to item 12, questions for members of councils. Four questions have been received. Question one, from councillor Massey to councillor Davies, cabinet member for economic growth.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Apologies for reading this out, but just in case there's anybody out there from the press or the public that's watching the meeting and doesn't have the agenda in front of them, I will do so, but usually I wouldn't if we were in the chamber. I was delighted to see the council's regeneration strategy has managed to progress despite the extreme challenges we've had of coronavirus. At the last cabinet meeting, we saw a million pounds of area growth funding alongside 2.7 million pounds of Tees Valley growth funding approved for Loftus High Street, which I'm assuming we all welcome. As one of the three councillors for Eston, I've attended a number of meetings over the last few years in an effort to regenerate Eston, particularly the precinct. Yet due to private ownership, particularly Aldi, this has proved difficult. However, we did approve as a council between 2015 and 19, a million pound for the regeneration of Eston. And the former cabinet member for economic growth, who was Bob Norton, went to some lengths to try and engage and meet with the local community to decide how this would be spent. And so the question is, as council investment will be vital in the months and years to come, what progress has been made with the council's other 1 million pound pots for area growth funding outside of Loftus, specifically in Eston, Redcar, Saltburn and Gisborough? And the questions to councillor Davies. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, thank councillor Massey for his question. Yeah, as he's mentioned, the other areas, I'm just going to focus on the other areas in my response. So so far, Saltburn, Eston, Gisborough and Redcar have all had some funding in the way of high street support grants or welcome to grants. Members will be aware that this was across the borough and targeted for high street support for businesses to either do some shop footworks, provide some bed space and to tidy up the high street in general, really. There's also been some other projects as well, so I'm just going to read through the list that I've got in front of me. So for Eston, they've currently spent, and this isn't very up to date, it's about five weeks out of date, but it's the most up to date figures that we've got for this, is 225,651. And that was to deliver the Senataf project and a contribution to the high street support schemes to date. In Gisborough, 100,250 pounds has been spent on the high street support and welcome to grant schemes. And Saltburn, 240,447. And this has been spent on the high street support and welcome to grant schemes, including the pier lighting and catnip toilet refurbishments. And Redcar so far has spent 260,817. And this has been spent on high street support and welcome to grant schemes. Although that figure for Redcar, we feel is considerably higher because it's been very, very well oversubscribed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Massey, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Davies for that positive response. I think both I, as a member of one of those wards, Eston, but also, if not the whole council, certainly the people in those wards, would be interested in seeing a breakdown of exactly what has been spent, as you've just addressed there. My question, as a supplementary, isn't a particularly difficult one, but it is that when chances allow for this to happen, would you come and visit Eston and discuss with the local councillors and the Teesville Ward councillors, who the ward backs on to, about future schemes that might take place with the remaining part of that 1 million pounds? Thanks.
Thank you councillor Davies.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, absolutely councillor Massey. I mean, I made this offer at the very beginning of the administration to get out and about and go and visit the ward. I did take up that request with the Teesville independents and visited part of that area on their request. They'll recall, I think it was the back end of the, or in fact the summer, because I do recall it was very, very hot. And I did require some liquid hydration after we got so far around. But it was nice to get out and about and yeah, absolutely to get out and about a bit more. And maybe even, I mean, we are working, obviously in the background. The team are still working on fast projects and Eston precinct is obviously a key one for us. And in this administration, obviously, we've said before, we want to equalise funding around the borough. And Eston precinct is something that we are committed to delivering, especially before the administration finishes its term in 2023. So yeah, I definitely do that. And just to take a bit of a leaf out of Rishi Sunak's budget speech, well, sort of budget speech when the coronavirus stuff came in. When it comes to Eston precinct, this administration will get the job done. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Davies. Move on to question two, councillor Hanaway to councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Barnes, would you please inform the council?
Councillor Hanaway, we can't hear you. Councillor Hanaway, we can't hear you. Can you put your hand up if you can hear us?
Yep.
Right, you're back on.
Shall I ask the question again? Would you please inform the council, councillor Barnes, whether there are to be any changes in the operation of the South Tees Multi-Agency Children's Hub?
Councillor Barnes?
Thank you for your question. I can inform council that there are no changes to the way in which contacts and referrals that come into the multi-agency children's hub for Redcar in Cleveland are managed. However, I can confirm that following the Ofsted inspection that judged Middlesbrough's children's services to be inadequate, Middlesbrough council made the decision to manage their own contacts and referrals rather than have them managed jointly with our service. As of the 1st of July, Redcar and Cleveland match has operated separately to Middlesbrough match, but it is still located in Daisy Lane. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, Hanaway?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. The decisions taken by our front door are among the most serious the authority ever takes. Because that's the point where we do everything we possibly can to prevent real harm to children. And the decisions taken there are owned by all Redcar and Cleveland Borough councillors as corporate parents. Surely then the council should have been informed of the decision to disband the current structure before letters were sent to other parties. Secondly, the hub took a long time to set up and involved a great deal of work by council staff. The rationale for doing it was that it would improve decision-making by having all the agencies in one place. Cleveland police were particularly keen that we had a joint hub with Middlesbrough so they didn't have to spread overworked staff too thinly across the children's strategy safeguarding meetings of two authorities. Can the lead member assure us that there will be no detrimental effects on the quality of decision-making or the actions taken to keep children safe from significant harm? Or on our early help services? Or on the Lado Service, which investigates allegations against professionals who work with children? Thank you.
Councillor Barnes?
Yes, I think it's important to note that Ofsted found that the match was providing an improved, accessible, single point of contact, although the quality of decision-making was not consistently affected. And as you know, Ofsted were the organisation that did the inspection for Middlesbrough. However, following the inspection, we commissioned an independent audit which provided assurance that decision-making was safe and that no children were left unsafe. Middlesbrough are clear that they are still supportive of partnership working. And the plan is to work towards a future collaboration that has a much strengthened and improved operating model. Our service continues to be delivered with health and police partners in the way it was previously. And therefore, there has been no change to operations for Redcar and Cleveland referrals. There's also a plan in place to ensure that we are addressing our improvement priorities so that the right children continue to get the right help at the right time. I would also add that as we are continuing to work out of Daisy Lane, the police are actually in those premises with us. We really didn't have any control over the fact that Middlesbrough, although I should quite rightly say it took a long time to set up and was only in operation a very short time, but Middlesbrough decided, as I say, following their Ofsted, that they wished to, you know, stop the actual joint match. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barnes. We're approaching the time for the meeting to end. We're near to complete the agenda. Can I propose we carry on to finish the questions and can I have a second if it's possible, please?
Second that councillor Davies, Mr Mayor.
Is that agreed? Right, that's agreed. We move on to question three from councillor Jeffrey to councillor Lanigan, please.
Thank you. Okay, so my question, which I'm going to read out as well, is to the leader. We've already had quite a lot of conversation about the situation that the council's budget is in at the moment. And my question actually asks about the fact that although we've been forced to work through the financial implications of the cyber attack, cabinet actually isn't going to be, as we've already heard today, receiving a financial update on the implications until the 4th of August. That's nearly seven months since the attack happened. I want to know from the leader, please, why this delay has taken place? And why, despite months of dialogue at ministerial level, which is what's written in the report, where we have provided all the information that we asked for, that was asked for, we still do not know if government will deliver the resources needed to cover the cost of the cyber attack, which we also know could run into many millions of pounds. And obviously, coupled with the Covid crisis, could have a huge impact on the delivery of services to local people. Thank you.
Leader of the council, please.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey for your...
Before the leader intervenes. There is a punctuation mistake in the question. And I would like to know where the quote from me ends.
It's a quote listed straight from the report councillor Nightingale. If you don't know where your punctuation marks in your report are, then I apologise.
Continuing the point of order, Mr Mayor, the punctuation mark is just one punctuation mark and it is not completed by another. Just read what you've written.
I'm perfectly capable of reading what I've written. And as I've just said to you, it's a quote from your report. So if you look back in your report, you will find where that quotation ends. I would have thought you would know it anyway, seeing as though you wrote the report.
For the order, Mr Mayor, all I'm asking for is the punctuation mark to be placed in the question properly.
Right, I'm advised it's not a point of order, but if we carry on like this, we won't get through the questions, which we just agreed to. So can we move on and sort that item out later? Councillor Nightingale? Yeah. Councillor Jeffrey? Councillor Lanigan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Jeffrey for your question. The cyber, the devastating attack that occurred with the cyber attack, which of course you're well aware was quickly followed by the Corona's pandemic that we had. And this has meant that the government has been dealing with both the Covid-19 crisis whilst dealing with the implications of the cyber attack as well. We always said that at the end of May 2020 would be a key milestone to take stock of how the recovery of our systems and data had progressed. And this would allow us to provide a more informed assessment of the position and the financial consequences of the cyber attack we had. In June of this year, we provided this update information to government. They have needed time to review this and consider it. And they're telling it is through their managing of public money governance. And it's their framework. Whilst we understand the government's need to carry out due diligence, council can rest assured that we are pushing for this to be concluded as soon as possible to allow the authority to plan its finances with greater certainty. In the best interest, however, councillor Jeffrey of the council, whilst these discussions continue, and they do continue at pace with both ministers and MPs and at very senior levels, we're treating them sensitively and confidentially. As you know, the attack is subject to a criminal investigation, which limits what we can be said about the position where we are. I am hoping that we will get a result very, very shortly. And I will bring that back to council. But you've got to appreciate councillor Jeffrey, there is a confidential and sensitive issue going forward with this, along with the criminal investigation that is underway at the moment. Thank you.
Can I do my follow-up?
Yep, I was just coming to you. It takes time with technology to get through. Sometimes you're on a delay. Sometimes I'm on a delay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I mean, I hear about the confidentiality and the sensitivity and the fact that there's a criminal investigation. And I obviously understand that. But I am concerned that sometimes government uses confidentiality and sensitivity as a mechanism to stop us talking publicly about what is a crucial issue for this council. And I'm also concerned that this council seems to be waiting for the government to take decisions on so many things. So it's decisions about funding for Covid, it's decisions about funding for the cyber attack. We're waiting for decisions on funding for Redcar. You know, we seem to be constantly waiting for decisions. And, you know, does the government think that we, or does the leader think that she has to stay quiet so that some of these other things will be progressed? And if she doesn't stay quiet, ministers perhaps would withdraw offers of funding or not proceed with offers of fundings for projects like Loftus? You know, is she being kept quiet through that process?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Jeffrey, you should know me by now, I don't keep quiet about anything. And I can absolutely assure you that there has been very, very frank discussions with both the minister and the MPs regarding this issue. My concern over this issue is about Redcar in Cleveland and about the financial costs that it took us to do this. It is progressing well. And I am hopeful, and no, I will not keep quiet. No one has asked me to keep quiet about this and I am not prepared to do that. We are in a situation at the moment that hopefully we will know within the next week or so. We are in a situation at the moment that hopefully we will know within the next week or so where we are with this. And I can absolutely assure you that it will be coming to full council. And we hopefully have got a decision on it. With the criminal investigation going on at the moment, I can't say anymore about this. And I'm sure councillor Jeffrey, as the past leader of this council, that you are aware of that. We can't go into any detail about what has happened here and where we are down that road to this. But as soon as I get the funding and decision from central government, you will hear about it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Anigan. We now move on to question four from councillor Quarterman to councillor Anigan. Councillor Quarterman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On the sixth of May, you co-signed a letter on behalf of Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council from all 12 councils in the North East and sent out by councillor Simon Hennig of Durham Council. Can you explain why such an important letter requesting additional funding that you signed on behalf of the 59 councillors of this borough was not shared with this council who only learned about the letter in the press? Thank you.
Councillor Anigan, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Quarterman, when I read this question that came in, I was some way puzzled. So I will tell you what happened about this and why this occurred the way that it did. And as you will appreciate, the COVID-19 crisis accelerated very quickly. And as the significant scale of financial indications for councils generally became more and more of an issue, I was asked as leader, acting on behalf of the council, whether I would support a letter being sent to government requesting additional funds. As leader, I am often contacted and asked to express a view on behalf of the administration or of the councils at all. And part of the leader's role is to act as the ambassador and the voice of the council in its dealings with central government, other local authorities and associations. It is also a part of the leader's role to work with the managing director to ensure that we've got financial stability at the council. You will understand, councillor Quarterman, that we are dealing with multiple issues at the height of the pandemic. And most important thing in my mind was to ensure that the letter was sent. The time scales for agreeing and sending the letter were short. And I was sure that by making a request for additional funds from central government in order to ensure the financial stability of the council was essential. I have to tell you, councillor Quarterman, that at the time rumours were circulating that councils were being asked to fund COVID-19 pressures via their reserves. And the letter was sent at very, very short notice on the Friday. The resulting, what happened with us, the government looked at that letter that came in from the northern councils and additional government funding was then announced on the following Monday. We have and I have have made great efforts to communicate with members through daily bulletins every day during the lockdown period. So I'm sorry if you somehow think was missed on this occasion. However, I trust that all members of the council will feel that sending this letter was the right thing to do for this council and our residents. It was highlighting the difficulties that we face and asking central government as a region to give us sufficient funding to see us through this crisis. That was the right thing, in my opinion, that we did. And it was all of the northern areas, councillor Quarterman, that did this. And because that had happened on the Friday afternoon, that letter was critical to go out on the Friday evening, telling people what we were doing and why we were doing it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Anigan. Councillor Quarterman, have you got a supplementary?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, councillor Anigan, for your reply. To be clear, I've got no complaint with the letter being sent out. And I fully accept that as the leader of our group and with the short time scales that, you know, sometimes you're going to have to act very quickly and on behalf of this council without, you know, maybe addressing us beforehand. But that said, you know, this letter is signed on our behalf and we should be formally informed. When I quizzed you about this on the 13th of May, you claimed it did result in a second tranche of funding. Well, it did not. That was national funding. The second tranche of funding was announced 18 days before the letter was sent out. So why would you make such an odd claim? Either you're claiming victories that are not yours or you aren't clear what is going on. And subsequently, I've learned that near the end of June, a second letter on this council's behalf went out from Durham, once again, as a press release and unannounced to this council. This after I've already complained before, along with other councillors. Again, short notice, fine, but then let us know what's going on formally. So my questions are this, can all our councillors receive copies of the two letters? Can you ensure any subsequent letters you sign in our names are sent out to all councillors? And finally, has the government actually responded to either letter? And if so, can we receive copies of their reply as well? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anigan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm quite surprised, councillor Quarterman, not just by your question, but by your second question that you've brought in here. And you've got to understand that we were under great financial pressure here. And there was no way, having spoken to the other leaders of the northern areas, that Redcar and Cleveland were not going to add their name to central government, making sure that we had extra money for Redcar and Cleveland. And that was essential in order to do that. Now, if you feel, and I've explained to you about the timeframe that we had there, and I will make sure that you get a copy of the letters. But you've got to understand that on a Friday afternoon, sometimes that isn't possible in order to get this down to Westminster. And we've got to make sure this administration, that this government is held to account over financing for the northern councils. And that's exactly what we intend to do. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Anigan. That concludes all the questions. Thank you, everybody, for the input and the contribution to it, and I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Billy. Well done, Mayor.